This addendum seems to be the policy of our purchasing department, and correct me if I'm wrong, that once the bid package goes out, we give the vendors an opportunity to ask any questions that they have regarding the purchase, the bid package. Is that right?
Well, this, these bids were handled in the Public Works Department. And the addendum is again, a three-page letter signed by our city engineer, Molly Villarreal, who's here. And again, it's part of the contract. We believe it's very important and treat everyone the same. So if they don't comply with the bid specifications, no matter what company it is, whether it's the purchasing department that may handle the bid process, sometimes the Public Works Department, in this case, it was the Public Works Department. Staff's here, if you have any specific questions.
Okay, I guess I do have some specific questions. My specific question is, when the bid package goes out, the vendors have an opportunity to ask questions which are compiled and tabulated by whichever department sends it out, and answers are provided to those questions. And that's what this addendum number one is. Is that right?
No, it's just acknowledging, I can make copies for the council and provide this to you today if you'd like. It's pretty clear. We're basically stating what some of the rules are and want them to acknowledge it. So we know they've read it and are going to comply.
All right, Mr. Hayes, I'm looking at it. And it says item C.
How did you get that?
Mr. Hayes, I'm asking you a question.
I can ask you questions, but...
It says, "Questions from bidders." So I'm asking what the general process is. Do we send out the bid package and then ask vendors to supply any questions they have as a general basis? Is that...
They can do that. They can do that when we have bid openings, or not bid openings, when we have pre-bid meetings down here in this room, they can ask questions. That's when they're supposed to ask questions. The rest of the council liked this. I don't know where he got that, but he's entitled to it, but I don't know where he got it. He didn't get it from staff. So would y'all like a copy? He has information that I don't, you know, you're not being privy to.
It's public information, is it not?
Yeah.
Ah, it is, for sure.
Okay. So, yeah, you can get it. But, so, we send out a, we give vendors an opportunity to ask questions, and then we provide answers to them.
Yes.
And that's essentially what this is?
No, it's not.
It's not? This is something different than that?
Yes.
Okay. And we sent this out February the 17th with a bid opening date of February the 20th. So it's a three-day turnaround. And I understand that there are laws that are promulgated by the state of Texas that we have to follow. And I expect us to do that and follow all the purchasing laws. But to me, $100,000 is significant. And the difference in price here is over $100,000. And so I would like to see us try to do everything we can to work with vendors to make sure they have documents all in file, all in line. If we got something from this low bidder and we noticed that they had not turned in the addendum, is that something we would typically call?
Were these sealed bids? Were these sealed bids?
Yes, yes, yes.
Please explain to him how that...
Okay, this was a sealed bid. That's a different thing.
There's a pre-bid meeting. All the people who are going to bid come to the pre-bid meeting. They ask questions during that pre-bid meeting. Following that pre-bid meeting, we answer everything and we issue this addendum. And so, you know, that gives everybody, all the bidders, the information. If any questions come in, even outside of that pre-bid meeting, we're going to give the answers to everybody. And then they have to acknowledge that they received the addendum in the bid, so that everybody's on the same playing field. Because there may have been clarification in the bid addendum that would materially impact their bid. So they might have bid higher or lower, depending on what's in that addendum. The bidder in question did write something on the page, but they wrote the bid packet reference and the date of the bid packet, rather than the addendum and the date the addendum was issued. In addition to that, there was some email back and forth to this vendor. The vendor was asking about open cut, which is not part of this project. And even if they would not have had this problem in the bid, this, as part of the history, this bidder submitted that they've only done 10,000 linear feet of pipe bursting ever as a company for various municipalities. This contract alone is 29,000 linear feet of pipe bursting. So if they would have done everything correct, we would have still come back and said that they don't have enough experience on this particular, with this method for it.
Is part of our bid qualifications experience requirement?
I know it has been in the past. I've not gone through the whole bid packet to see if that's specifically laid out, and I intend to do so after this. But it's important that they have enough experience in pipe bursting. Not, I mean, this is three times the amount they've ever done. So it's, you know, a big project.
All right. Thank you.
While you're up here, let me just ask, just for the general public, will you explain what pipe bursting is, what we're really doing, what it has to do with?
And Mike might want to back me up on this, because I'm not an expert, but at a 30,000...
Well, in a, yeah, in a...
Yeah, 30,000-foot view, instead of digging up the pipe, tearing it all out, putting new pipe in, and then putting the dirt back, they go down and they use a machine to go through and insert pipe and break the existing pipe apart. So basically, you're building a new pipe by breaking apart the old pipe, and you don't have to dig as much.
And what does that do for the general public? It's for drainage?
It's for sewer. It's for sewer. Yes, ma'am.
One more question, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Okay, and this might be more of a Mike question than a Bart question, but the vendor that we're proposing giving this contract to already has a pipe bursting contract with the city, has been doing that work. Are we satisfied with the quality of the work that they're doing?
We have been, and they are doing Westgate right now. They're in the Westgate area. They won that contract.
And the reason I ask is I had become aware of some issues over at some residences on Gladys that were, there were some issues which you may have heard about.
I'd heard a few, yes, sir.
Okay. But overall, you think they're doing quality work?
We've been satisfied with their work so far. I don't know what it ended up being. They had said they had run into a gas line and a phone line. I don't know. That's what I heard up front. I don't know if that's in fact true, because we're pipe bursting on the track of our existing pipe. So if they would have hit that, it probably would have been in digging the initial hole before they pipe burst it down. But I don't have confirmation of that.
All right. Thank you.
I did get a phone call on Gladys Street as well, and it was, it was basically how they left the area that they were working. And I got, and we called, and I got a call the next day from the person, the citizen that I called, and actually said that they had done a really good job cleaning up. So they did respond quickly.
And if there are issues, we'll definitely follow up. We do periodically have some problems. And even when all the locates are done, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're not going to hit something when it goes in. If the locate was off, or if it's really tight area, there are problems. They are required to address them, though, when they run into them.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
I want to thank the council for their support. You all approved many contracts in the last two years for sewer-related work, more than any time we can ever remember as a staff. And I think there's close to $6 million before this contract, bar at $6 million worth of work right now before this contract. Five point...
Five point seven.
Yeah, thank you. So we want to thank the council for that. Item number two is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Brass Star Contracting Incorporated for the Cartwright Avenue and Goldie Add Street Storm Sewer Drainage Repair Project. The project consists of the repair of drainage structures, including concrete box culverts, junction boxes, and surface inlets. The administration recommends the project be awarded, again, to the lowest bidder, Brass Star Contracting here in Beaumont, in the amount of $93,450. A total of 60 calendar days are allocated for completion of the project. Funds are available in the general fund. We recommend approval.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved to approve, ma'am.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Another bid project. Great, thanks. Next item, please.
Item number three is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Article 18.01, Section 18.01.003 of the Code of Ordinances, Beaumont, Texas, to make changes relating to bingo fees, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. The 86th Legislature enacted House Bill 914 affecting the collection of bingo prize fees by local jurisdictions. And that section of the Code of Ordinances, 18.03.003, is no longer in compliance with statutory regulations. The current ordinance levied a 2% tax on the grocery receipts of bingo games conducted within the city. The ordinance should be amended to reflect the current law. And in accordance, the city of Beaumont shall impose a fee of 2.5% of a cash bingo prize of more than $5. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of item number three. Is there a motion on this item?
Moved to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, ma'am. How much do we receive annually on this?
Our estimate for fiscal year 2020 was $70,000.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And I believe we have a public hearing on the next item.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, council, you've seen this item before. You've actually approved it. But Department of Housing and Urban Development's office in Houston has visited with staff and recommended that you do it again because of COVID-19. Allow for additional comments from the public. So the item, it's a resolution adopting the 2020 Annual Action Plan, and the proposed budget reflects estimated allocations of $1,361,000 in community development block grant funding, an estimated $100,000 in program income, and $477,000 in home funding. And council, if you'll hold another public hearing and then consider the item, that's what's being requested.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the floor for the public hearing. Officer, do you know if there's anyone that wants to speak on this item?
There are.
No? You don't have anything? Okay, I'll close the floor. And you've already read the caption, correct? All right, council, is there a motion on this item? Item number four.
So moved for proof.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All right, no discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I'll move now to public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on any item, now's the time to do so. As we mentioned earlier, we'd appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Oops, sorry. It's time for our conference call.
Hello, mayor and city councilmen. I know, I think you called Vernon Durden's name.
Please just...
There's maybe more. There you go, there you go. But we're actually here together. We just want to address the city and let you know that we appreciate, first of all, Dr. M.L. King's Park. It's a beautiful job, great park, great location. Upon the response to George Floyd's murder and death last month, we decided in the late evening of last Wednesday, I think about 9:17, the Beaumont chapter of NAACP, where I'm the president, and we, in conjunction with 100-plus black men, and on behalf of President Eugene Johns, we all partnered together with other coalitions in Beaumont, Texas, and had a wonderful, peaceful rally on behalf of death of not just one African-American man, but on multiple African-American men that have been brutally murdered and killed in our streets in America. So that was a timely event because of the fact, as God moved on my heart, I'm also a pastor, so I have to go to that place on the spiritual side, that there would be some unrest. Little did I know that there would also be rioting and other issues throughout the United States. And this is the first time in history where you had the response that we have today. So we wanted to set the bar, set it high with a peaceful protest, and to give the citizens of Beaumont, Texas, and Jefferson County, a place to gather and share their hearts in a safe place. So some of the council was there. I think I read the green slip. I can't call names, but you know who you are, who you are, and you were there. We thank you for being there. And anytime you see my name associated with anything, and you are a representative of this area, you're always welcome to speak. I don't care who you are. You're always welcome to speak and share with the burdens and the stress. Some people talk about PTSD. This is true, PTSD, when you're dealing with a pandemic along with these issues that we deal with socioeconomic disparities in the African-American community. We want to make the African-American community better so that we all come together in more unity. And you can't spell community without unity. So with that being said, I want to see...
Just go and tell about this afternoon.
Okay, this afternoon, Port Arthur, we partnered with the NAACP in Port Arthur. Pastor Kalen Gardner is the president over there, and we showed him our model where we're going to have another gathering for his people in Port Arthur, Texas. Mayor Barti went on the news last night, and they're going to show them how to gather peacefully and to share their hearts and their feelings. This is a time where all people are coming together. This is not about bail reform and criminal justice reform or any of those reforms. This is about reform of the heart. And so that's the reason why we're having these different gatherings. And on June 19th, we were supposed to have the NAACP banquet in Beaumont, Texas. Give me two seconds. In Beaumont, Texas, but we had to cancel that and move that back. It's going to be in December 18th, the banquet for the NAACP. But we're going to meet at the same park, 6:30, June 19th, which is next Friday. And we invite you, mayor, city council, and anyone that would like to speak to the hearts of our community, whether or not, what party you're a part of, no matter what your race or background is, we invite you to come and share and console our community. Thank you for your time. It will be 6:30. I'm responding to a question. It would be 6:30 next Friday, June 19th. We would go back to the beautiful park that this city put together, Dr. Martin Luther King Park, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Park on the corner of College Street and Martin Luther King. Again, thank all of you that participated. We did not send a flyer to anyone. We just released it on Facebook, and you all responded. And I appreciate that. We appreciate that as a community.
Thank you.
I think we had a question over here.
I'm sure June 19th is in two weeks. You say next?
In two weeks, next Friday. Is that two weeks from next week?
Next Friday is the 12th.
It's the 12th. Okay, so it would be June 19th. Whatever that night is, June 19th, Friday at 6:30.
Yes, sir. And we know who you are, but please state your name and address for the record, so we, since we called you Mr. Durden.
All right. My name is Pastor Michael Cooper. I am the president of the NAACP, and my address is 540 Oakmont Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Durden.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, staff. I'm standing here to address you, and it's going to be repetitive because I have not gotten an answer. So I did write a letter to the city manager concerning the airport in Amelia. That is an issue. And like I said, there is more than enough where we have disturbances from morning until late at night. And if it's for the betterment of Beaumont, then why not tell us as neighbors? The other thing I'm standing here before you is weed abatement. I got a letter, May 7th, and that'll be in the letter to the city manager. I was not informed prior to that if I was not in compliance, that I did not get a letter from the code enforcer. The other thing is, I appreciate our council, and I would like to say that I hope that best practices and all of the ordinances and whatever, just piggybacking, that we don't have the kind of disturbances like there's been in other cities. So I know we've had Texas issues, we've had Beaumont issues, but I hope that the powers that be are talking to each other. And it sure would be nice to have the mayor to say something to the city of Beaumont, rather than organizations having to talk to you. So bottom line, I thank you for your services, and I hope with June 1st already passed, that the issues of flooding is being, you know, addressed very well. We have an issue, but I've told my neighbors, you know the numbers, you call, and you stand up, and you talk to your council people. So with that in mind, I thank you for your service. I thank you for your listening here. And bottom line, I would like to hear that something is going on at municipal airport, because there's a Beaumont Municipal Airport oil and gas fund. So somebody knows something. So we hope that it doesn't stay a big secret. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Jasmine Patton, 3224 12th Street, Beaumont, Port Arthur, Texas.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jasmine Patton. I am the president of the NAACP branch at Lamar University, and I'm also the SGA vice president for the student body at Lamar University as well. And I came as well with Mr. Michael Cooper. And just to reiterate on a few things on how this is affecting our community, not only the death of George Floyd, but other African-Americans at the hands of what many would call a system that is proving its point to not serve the community anymore, but rather harm a very large population, which will trickle down into not only crime rates, but the mental health of citizens as well. Mr. Cooper spoke on PTSD. I spoke with a lot of students on campus, especially as Student Government Association Vice President, and not only as NAACP President, but it's my duty to speak with students and see how are they doing. A lot of students who not only go to Lamar University, but live in Beaumont as well, are experiencing not only stresses, but effects that they're feeling, not only from seeing the things on social media, but in their lives as well. I just want to ensure that positive changes are made, and not only positive changes are made, but things are being addressed to the public, so that way the community can feel like we have support and that it isn't only the responsibility of social justice organizations such as NAACP. I know myself, this isn't only an African-American issue, this is a human rights issue. This trickles down into all our lives and where we stand within society. And I just want to thank you all. I know you all have probably had to work on it, had to address it. These are conversations that you all are having. It's in our faces now. We can't ignore it. But I know myself, I will be at the peaceful protest today with NAACP in Port Arthur, Texas. And I think it would be good for the community just to see the support from not only officials, but hearing that support as well. But yeah, that's all I just wanted to say. I just wanted to represent the student body at Lamar University, represent NAACP, and also speak on behalf of the students that I serve as SGA Vice President. And thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Patton.
Thank you.
Ms. Patton?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for what you do, and you're serving your body well.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Y'all have a great day.
You, too.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, if there's no other citizen who wishes to speak, I'll move to council member comments. And I'll start with you, council member Mutan.
Mayor, thank you so very much. As our NAACP president has spoken, and the president of Lamar University, I have a heavy heart. It's, it's, it's a sad issue, being a mother of a black son, having a brother, a father. It's, it hits home. When you teach your children or your son to abide by the law, to make sure that you show your hands, to make sure you're complying with every instruction, and still you could possibly not come home. There are a lot of people in America that's not faced with having to deal with telling your children or giving your children those instructions. Unfortunately, being black in America, black mothers have to do that. And with another death, another march, another possibility of guilty officers going free, it's not a surprise that our country is in a rage. I support the marches. I support, first of all, freedom of speech. I don't support the violence, the looting, the unrest that is going on. But by all means, when something has been swept under the rug for as long as this issue has been swept under the rug, this is the answer that you get, and this is what comes out. And I've spoken once before about... And I've spoken once before about when you're pushed in a corner, you come out fighting because it's been suppressed for so long. My prayer is that the march today at 2 o'clock, which should be going on right now, is peaceful. And again, it's not just a black issue, it is a human issue. And so much has been said about it, but we have to stop talking about it and we have to be the change that this country needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Samuel?
Thank you, Mayor. This is unlike any time that I've seen in my lifetime. Some people may not understand what it's like to be black in America. I had a conversation with my son before coming here. He expressed to me how tired he is of having to be on pins and needles to not be offensive about his blackness. Not being called a racist when he calls out racism, simply because some say it's the race card. How going to work every day, he has to be careful about how he presents himself because of his blackness. Going into a convenience store, not being perceived to be a criminal because of the way he wears his hair or the clothes that he may wear. Being stopped by a police officer. Having his heart flutter, wondering what will be the outcome. This is what happens every day in black America. A nephew explained to me how his father taught him about being a black man in America and said, told him what to do in the event he was stopped by a police officer. But this time, he's explaining to his son. He has his son to lie down on the floor. And he puts his hands behind him. And he asks his son, "Do you feel fearful?" "No, Dad." Then he puts his knee in the small of his back. "Do you feel fearful?" "No, Dad." Then he moves his knee up to the bottom of his neck. "Are you afraid? Are you fearful?" "No, Dad." Then he puts his knee on his son's neck. And he asks his son, "Do you feel..." "Dad, I can't breathe." Then he explained to his son, "This is what George Floyd felt." I had to explain to my grandson what he's seeing on the television. I had to explain to him, "He has no reason to be afraid of police officers." As he asked, I said, "Just know that you have to be careful with everyone you meet." "I can't breathe." There are blazes all around this country. From the muzzles of hatred, the muzzles of hurt, fielded, fueled by the viral venoms of racism and hatred being spewed all over our land. You would think we would have learned. Pick up my phone. Go to social media. It's a new joke. The challenge, the George Floyd challenge. That is the America that we see today. And we wonder why are there flames? It's flames of hurt. Can't breathe. We have these masks obstructing our ability to breathe. And then we also have a nail on our throat. But some people say, "Just be quiet, let it go." But how can we be quiet when our brothers and our sisters, our sons and our daughters are being killed on the street? By wolf, by wolves in sheep's clothing? How do our young people distinguish between the good blue and those that are not wearing it for the right reason? Not only are we having to deal with these intentional acts of violence, but we're also dealing with the unintentional and the disproportionate results of economic racism in a benign systemic, systemic issue in our environment. This COVID-19. Not only are we dealing with the riots, the fear of law enforcement on the street, but we're dealing with COVID-19 disproportionately impacting the minority community. Some people say, you know, you, you talk about that, but you're playing this, they play this proverbial game of, well, you're talking about things that's history. 401 years. This is what the minority community, the black community, has dealt with in America. 401 years, from 1619 to today. What happens when you lose hope? Now, we're also dealing with the issue of a hurricane in the Gulf, coming into the Gulf. In the minority communities, the older infrastructures, they're having to deal with sewer backing up, they're having to do, deal with bad streets that are continually getting worse. And some people say, "Well, we're working on that equally." Equal is fair when you're starting at the same starting line. But we're dealing with a stagger with no curves around the track. Yet and still, we're asked to persevere, to keep our head up, to continue to have hope, keep the faith. But until we get it right, not as white Americans, or black Americans, or Asians, or Latinos, or Hispanics, but as human beings, as one mankind, I suspect we will continue to see the glow of fires and the flames all across our country. That's not the desire. But when you're hurt, it's fight or flight. Some may ask, "Why did I kneel during the pledge?" Because I'm praying for our country. I want to keep the hope and have faith that one day, some of these dreams will come true. But since I've been here on this earth, I continue to see the same thing over and over again, and they're asking us to be patient. The land of the free, the home of the brave. But I can't breathe. So what are you going to do? What am I going to do? I'm going to keep the fight. I'm going to fight the good fight. I'm going to fight the battle. But I'm not going to fight hatred with hatred. I'm going to fight hatred with unity. Fight it with love. Sometimes it's going to mean tough love. But I refuse to give in to that satanic spirit. So those of you who are listening, a lot of people didn't understand why Colin Kaepernick kneeled for the national anthem. Many people called him, made him out to be the villain. But what will you do if you're hurt? I never judge anyone if I haven't walked in their shoes. So right now, we're being distracted. I believe in the right to protest. There are distractors in the protest so that they will change the narrative of what's going on. I wish I could say it's different in my city. We are one blow away from being on national news every day. One incident away. We have great police officers. But I read reports. I read police reports at least three or four times a week. And just like any other profession, there are some that should not be there. The only way for evil to continue to grow and spread is for the good people to remain silent. And the people are refusing to be silent. But my question to all of them, where will you be? What will you be doing? What will you say next month? Or four or five months from now? Or a year from now? So I'm asking those who believe in a spirit and have a spirit of truth within you, let it be known. Because the only way we will fight this thing of racism and bigotry is by meeting it head on and fighting it with every ounce of life that we have. We as councilmembers don't hold a magic wand. We don't always get it right. We fall. But I'd be damned if I don't get back up. I'm mad, I'm angry, and I'm hurt for what our children have to deal with now. Our grandkids. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mayor Proton Pike?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it goes without saying that those individuals that stood by are just as guilty as that officer for not doing the right thing. You know, I saw Pastor Benoit, we were talking when he first came in before the meeting started. The answer is always going to be love because God is love. And when somebody is not doing God's work, they're not showing the love. And Jesus said, "Love your neighbors as I loved you." Now, when we do that, we're going to solve a whole lot of problems. But until we do, we won't. Now, Jesus, as a Christian, I believe, is the Son of God, laid His life down for all of us. Because for this, even as we were sinners, He died for us. And those, those people that do the things that they've done will pay the price. They will. What we have to do is live our life every single day as an example of how God does love us and show our fellow citizens that's exactly how we look at it. Color doesn't have anything to do with it. God doesn't seek color. God does not seek color. We are a spiritual being in a physical body. And we have, we have a choice. We can live the way God wants us to live, which is love your neighbors yourself or not. That's our choice. We get free will. And we have to make up our mind that we're not going to sit back and allow things that should be addressed and corrected to do that. Now, we've got a great chief of police. I've known Jimmy Singletary since we were kids and he surrounded himself with some great people. And we have some great police officers. But all of us are sinners. All of us have made mistakes. And all we can do is pray for them to do the right thing every single day. We can't do it for them. But I have confidence in the officers that we have here in Beaumont, that they're going to do the right thing. And we've got to believe that. I'm not looking as an individual, as a Christian, on how I think you might be able to screw up at some point in time. I don't, you've heard me say this before, I don't carry grudges because we all make mistakes. This situation with George Floyd wasn't a mistake. It was intentional. And every single one of those guys, in my opinion, should be tried for first degree. All of them. But what we have to do with our life is decide what we're going to do every single day. Are we going to live as the pastor? I know he does. Am I going to follow God and do the right thing and show my love toward my, my brothers and sisters? Because we're all children of God. And until we do that, guys like that individual in Minneapolis, he's not doing God's work. Nothing even remotely close. He doesn't love God's children like we should. And once we get there, we're all going to be better off. That's not, that's not me saying it. Pastor and I was talking, it's in the Bible. God is love. And until we start doing that, then nothing else is going to change. It's a, it's changing the heart of people. And you've heard me say this many, many times, you know, keep us on the prayer list because we're trying to do the best we can. We're not all going to do it right all the time. Keep the officers in, in your prayers. Because they don't know every single day they go out, what they're going to have to deal with every single day. And not everybody's willing to do that, to put their life on the line for people they don't know. But I appreciate the folks that we've got here. I think they're doing a great job. I think they'll continue to do a great job. I pray for our city that we keep our focus on what is the right thing to do and not focus on some of these people that are doing the wrong thing. When they're looting and burning and stealing, that's not God. When they're looting and burning and stealing, that's not God, we know that. But as far as anybody peacefully protesting, that's our right. I mean, I was talking about last week about our, uh, ability to assemble. We, it's been slowed down a little bit because of COVID-19, but that's part of our Bill of Rights. Let's think about each other. And if we do, we'll all be much better off. We have a choice every single day to wake up and thank God for what we've got and ask him to guide us to do the right thing. That's what I do, and you're in my prayers as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a soberness in the atmosphere here today because I believe we're all brokenhearted and we're grieving over the state of our union. We're grieving over the tragic, tragic death of George Floyd on May the 25th. This one here has been very difficult for us. Going back to Michael Brown in Ferguson, Missouri, Sterling in Baton Rouge, Castile and St. Paul, or you could go to Charlottesville, the list just goes on and on and on. I think the reason this one here is so difficult is because we watched it as his life was pushed out of his body. And as a nation, we listened to him as he said, "I can't breathe. Please, would someone help me?" At one point, we heard him call out for his mother. This is one that's very hard for us to get our minds wrapped around, it's very, very difficult. It has gone from "I can't breathe" to we hear now people saying "we can't breathe", and I hope it continues because it needs to become a national issue that each one of us takes ownership of. As Councilmember Audwin said, this is an issue that goes back to 1619 that Jamestown, when the first African was brought into America as a slave. Four hundred and one, four hundred and one years of injustice. This can't be done away with overnight. Fifty-five years since Jim Crow was erased from our law books. It's not going to take care of this, we have to now eradicate it from our hearts. It's a systemic problem that we have to confront. I hope this time it's a tipping point because I do sense in our nation a real hunger to come to the table, and I hope we do come to the table, and I hope we do talk. I hope we try to understand before we seek to be understood. You have to understand. It's true that we all believe in peaceful protesting, that is the hallmark of our democracy. And we all disagree, we all agree that there shouldn't be rioting and looting, we all understand that, we get that. But please, just know this, try to, be, before you judge a man's actions, try to understand his journey, what brought him to where he is today. And that understanding may not lead you to justification of what he's doing, and rightfully so, but it may lead you or help you to find forgiveness just to understand why is he or she acting the way they are. I would ask everyone, please, there's so much that could be said here today that should be said, but time won't permit it. So don't measure the depth of our feelings by the length of our words. We feel very deeply about this issue. Please know that. And please know this, that Americans are standing up today and they're speaking out to authority and to power, which they should do. They should speak to authority. That's what makes us the great nation that we are, to speak to authority. And I would encourage everyone, before you stand up to speak, let us all first take a knee to pray. We learned that from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in their day when they, in the sixties, were protesting. They would first meet at churches to pray, and then they would go forth and they would protest peacefully. Today, we meet on social media and it's, it's a different time and a different culture. But I do understand the rage and the anger, I do. You have to understand before you can be understood. But I would encourage everyone to please. Before we go, I stood last night in Rogers Park with that group of protesters, I stood with them. But then at the end, we all knelt down to pray. And remember this, we saw it on May the 25th, from your kneecap to the floor is 20 inches, 20 inches. You're 20 inches from a tragedy where you could put your knee on a man's neck and, and squeeze a life out of him. Or you're 20 inches from bowing and praying and finding an answer and a breakthrough. So please, let us, let us take the 20 inches, let us pray, and then let us stand up and speak out loudly for what we believe in. Pray for Belmont, pray for America. And please know that as leaders, as I said, we feel very deeply about this, but please don't measure the depth of our feelings by the length of our words. God bless you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Gatz.
Thank you, Mayor. What happened to George Floyd was inexplicable, unconscionable, and a tragedy. It has caused Americans all across this country to reexamine questions that need to be asked. These questions need to be asked, however, in such a manner that it does not involve arson, looting, rioting, but peaceful protesting. And I want to compliment Michael Cooper and the NAACP on the peaceful rallies that he's already led and conducted last week uh, that he plans to continue to, uh, conduct. These questions need to be asked and reexamined as we go forward in the future. Uh, to Ms. Allen, is that, did I get your name right? Uh, if you would like to go to the airport with me, if you'd like to take a tour of the airport to have any of your questions answered, I would be happy to make those arrangements for you, just get with me and I would, uh, invite you to come see what we have going on out at the Belmont Municipal Airport. I think you'll be amazed and impressed. Uh, to the city manager, as you know, we do have a storm brewing in the Gulf, and I have a question about whether or not citizens will have the opportunity to obtain sandbags either from the city or to the county, or if you know, uh, in preparation for this. We certainly hope it doesn't come this way, but we want to be prepared. Do you have any knowledge of that? How can we find out?
We, we, we'll find out.
You can, okay.
The EOC has been working on it, I'll ask Carol to speak at the end, if that's okay.
Please, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, I saw an email earlier this week regarding hazardous waste disposal. And I would like to challenge city staff, or specifically you, Mr. Manager, to bring us some options that could maybe better help the community have some locations to dispose of that as the, uh, as the year goes on. I know we were partnered up with the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, um, but I think that has been delayed for the year or maybe postponed till, I, I don't know when. But anyways, once a year is, just doesn't seem like enough, uh, for a community our size, and I'd like to see if we couldn't do something more frequent on a more permanent basis. Councilmember Samuel Luton, my prayers are truly with the African-American community for what the challenges that y'all have had in the past and in the future. I can't speak for anybody else up here or any other citizen, but I can speak for myself and my family. And the African-American community has been in our prayers. And what took place last week was not fair, it was not right, and it should not have happened, period. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Officer Riley, would you want to, can you speak on sandbags? I know that that's, it's been discussed. Okay. Just to report.
It didn't break, okay. Um, basically, sandbags are usually provided by the county for your different precincts. We have in the past provided them, I believe during Harvey. So I, I mean, for there to be a change or something like that, it would have to go through, of course, council, but it's always been the county that's provided the sandbags, plus our local, um, our local retailers have those.
Okay, so if you will, um, when we go back to the EOC, um, ask Captain Oknichak to, um, to contact Mike White over there and see what their plans are so we can coordinate.
Absolutely, we're already working on it.
Thank you. And we'll be putting that out as we do everything else. Uh, city manager, you have anything today? Uh, city attorney, okay. Um, I'll just end with, there's a lot been said today and, um, you know, I've thought a lot about this and, you know, I can't begin to say that I even can partially understand, um, when I see my friends upset and think about what they're saying about their children and how they feel when they go out. I can't, sometimes they, people say you have to walk a mile in the shoes to know, I don't think that. I think you have to, um, because you can't, you can't put yourself in a position that you're not in. But what you can do is try to do that. And, um, I, I love my black friends as much as I love my white friends, and there's no doubt about that. And, um, they know that. Hispanic, whomever. I don't, I, I have a hard time understanding the racism because I don't feel it, but I know how I feel and I know how my friends that I've talked to feel. Uh, I can only say that I cannot comprehend what it must be like. But I do know how it makes me feel, and it makes me feel very, very sad. Some say as a leader, you've got to get in front of things, and that is true. But also as a leader, you have to understand that sometimes others understand and know better in what to do and what to say. I truly believe that. Um, I've thought about having a press conference, I've thought about putting information out about what I'm thinking. But I do think, um, that my cohorts on council, um, that live it every day and those, um, that were, two that were here today, um, with the Hundred Black Men and the NAACP understand it better than I do. And, um, I ask them to help our city heal, but also I ask them to bring our city together and to make sure that we don't hurt each other. You know, we need to, um, support protest, we need to support freedom of speech, and I absolutely do, and I welcome it and I recommend it. But I have to say how proud and how much I thank the, the people who have led these events, protests, and kept them peaceful because we need to do it absolutely, without a doubt, it needs to happen. But we also need to make sure that we don't hurt each other in doing so and make it worse and make it counterproductive. So, um, with that said, I just, I, I don't, I don't even, it's, it's even hard for me to talk about because I don't, I just can't comprehend this kind of thing still happening in our day and time. And I think that we all have to recognize that and not put up with if we see something happening that's racism in any way, any way, shape or form, that we don't allow it and we stand up and we speak against it. And, um, you know, that's what this is and that's what we're talking about. And, uh, all I can say is that, um, I pray every day that things get better. Um, it's been said, it doesn't happen overnight, and that's for sure because we're talking about a long time. But, um, I still have hope that in some days to come, that things will be different and that we can love each other as friends, family, brothers and sisters. Because, um, I don't, I don't love you or like you because of the color of your skin. And I think that, um, we should all practice that. And I'm not trying to preach, I'm not a preacher, I'm just, um, letting you know how I feel. People have said, what are you thinking about this? I've written so many different things down, and I'm just speaking from my heart. It's, um, it's horrible. And, um, to my council cohorts that have spoke about their kids and, uh, Audwin and Robin, and I talk to y'all often and, um, I get guidance from Pastor Benoit a lot, my friend. Um, I just don't even know what to say other than I very much want us to move forward and to figure out a way to stop this violence. And as people say, this is a people problem, it is a people problem. And we're not going to change every person because there are going to be mean people out there. There's going to be people who say something and do something else, without a doubt. But, um, I just think that those of us who really care about it need to stand up to it and say, this is not right. And that's what happened last week and many other times. And many other times, different scenarios isn't right. But, um, but, you know, just, um, speaking from my heart, um, I'm sorry that this happened and, I wish that it didn't. And I hope that our, uh, country, uh, can do better in the future with all of us working together and caring about each other. And that's all I have, if nobody else has anything. And we are adjourned.